The Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clark, roll call.
Counselors Kadim, Dionne, Kilby,
Here.
La Libbidi LaBeau, Lee, Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier? Pereira?
Yeah.
And President Ponte?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This meeting, as we all know, is being televised here tonight via Zoom communications due to the recent uptick in cases in the city because we are in a red status. We are going to take it on a meeting by meeting basis to determine how we are going to continue to conduct our meetings on a case by case basis because it is, of course, our all priority, my priority, to ensure that everybody on the council and our guests in attendance are safe throughout the course of our meetings. With that being said, this meeting is, in fact, remote. Citizens' input was taken via remote access to the City Park, which can be emailed to city underscore council at or na dot org. It is due by three P M. at the date of the meeting. First item on our agenda on Committee on Finance is Citizens' Input. Madam Clark?
The first item we have is, was submitted by Colin Dias of five sixty Ray Street. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the City Council. I wish to speak on a few issues facing our community and which are on the council agenda. First of all, regarding the city administrative position, it's clear and obvious the city administration and the city council wants to see our city succeed with the best individuals we can find. I just hope the city council and the public can review the Millbury separation agreement and any job performance reviews. I just wish, in the future, employment agreements aren't announced the Friday before a city council meeting, and the city should allow the public more time for vetting and comment. In regards to municipal advertising, I used to be very against billboard and other forms of municipal advertising, such as vehicle and vehicle advertising. I have since changed my mind. We should look for any forms of revenue we can. I heard from a city official at the last meeting that we can't have municipal advertising on city vehicles because, and I quote, Mr. Furling, Furland doesn't want advertising on his vehicles. They are not his vehicles, they are city vehicles, and the city should look into municipal advertising. Multiple reports show that the city can add up to three million in yearly revenue if we add multiple forms of municipal advertising via billboards, vehicles, and buildings. On another note, I wish to discuss the creation of a municipal transfer station slash gasification plant. I know there are discussions currently being held in the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs. I understand the chairman of the board is a big fan and proponent of a transfer station slash gas plant. However, like the composting program, nothing seems to get done. To the residents of our great city, if I am a member of the City Council after November of two thousand and twenty one, the lip service will end. I hope to be chairman of the Health and Environmental Affairs Committee. We will end that committee's empty talk and promises, and we will bring the administration to the table and craft plans to create a municipal transfer station which can be transformed into a gasification plant. Attached to the citizens' input is the two thousand and fifteen plan created by the city, which is collecting dust for a transfer station, glassification plant. Finally, I hope my proposal to create a ladder program to help elderly and disabled with essential ladder services does not fall on deaf ears and is transferred to the committee. I hope there is no motion to accept and place on file. That is lame. If you believe my idea is bad, be brave and say so, and vote to deny my idea. We should always be more inclusive of the residents of our community, of the ideas of the residents of our community. Thank you very much for your time, Colin Dias.
I'd like to respond, if possible. Council President?
Councilwoman Lee.
Um, so there's some, when it was referring to me, the chair of the Environmental Affairs Subcommittee, there is some inaccuracies there. And fortunately, Mr. Perry's here to confirm, because he was at the meeting as well. I've not once at all supported the gasification plant in any way, shape, or form. I think that's been mentioned a handful of times in the, and by that individual in the citizens' input, and I just sometimes let things go because, you know, it is what it is, but at this case, it's not, it's not accurate. And it's, and he actually put a, a open meeting law complaint, so I thought he was paying more attention to the meeting, but I did not support that. And as a matter of fact, Councilor Pereira spoke at that meeting and mentioned that she supported the gasification. And then it was, and then John Perry actually beat me to the punch, why, why wouldn't be a good fit here in Fall River? Main reason being is that right now Fall River has to focus on decreasing its tonnage, and we'll probably have more conversations about that as well in the future. And in order to, for a gasification plant to really be productive, we have to gain more tonnage, a lot more tonnage than we have now. And that is not something that I think Fall River should be doing or needs to be doing. So I do not, in any way, shape, or form, support a gasification plant. I want, and I'm only speaking on this on, for the purposes of accuracy, and if anyone wants to watch that meeting, they can, it's, FRGTV has it. The gasification was not supported by me, and Mr. Perry explained why it wasn't, why it wouldn't work in Fall River in general. What I did bring up was anaerobic digestion, and that's something that I'm waiting to see, Mr. Perry can come to the next meeting that we have to give us information as far as how that would fit in Fall River, if that's something we can do. I provided information, I provided reading material in that meeting about anaerobic digestion and how some cities and other areas around the country have incorporated this. My main goals are to have something that's environmentally safe, but also reduce costs for Fall River, and I believe those two things happen. The other thing is in regards to composting. Cambridge, right now, is the only city in the entire state that actually has a very comprehensive composting program. However, they started very small, they started with home composting, the way that we're trying to start right now. So if anyone is genuinely interested in composting, then right now you would be supporting the home composting, and if you have any kind of, you know, any kind of aspirations at all for it to become something more comprehensive, the way that I would want it to be, then supporting the home composting now and gradually working our way to that would work. Right now, and unfortunately, we have Mr. Perry and we have Mr. Hardy here, who-
Point of order, Mr. President, point of order. Sorry to interrupt you, Councilman Lee.
That's, this is the-
It's input. It's not a platform, it's citizens' input.
Mr. 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 Kilby, I am, I am clarifying information from citizens' input. And I'm just clarifying it, so that's all I'm doing right now. So in regards to the home composting program, in regards to that, if we support the home composting, and Mr. Hardy and Mr. Perry are here to confirm that, it would reduce costs in our, in our city. So that's, that's for clarification purposes only, and that's why I'm making this point. And they can confirm that, or they can deny it, if they choose to, but we know that if we were reducing tonnage in the city, it would only benefit us in more ways than one. So that's all I have to say about that, and it's not a platform. It was specifically to the information that was in the citizens' input. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Pereira?
Yeah, I would just like to add, Councilor Lee is correct. I said to look into gasification because that is another method. However, and Mr. Perry is here, he is putting together with the mayor a trash task force to look at all of those options that are available, and several people that are here, I believe, are on that committee. Maybe Mr. Perry, at a later time, can talk to that, but all of those issues will be brought up. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clark?
The second was presented by the Preservation Society of Fall River. Dear members of the City Council, the Preservation Society of Fall River is in full support of any plan that preserves the circa eighteen ninety seven Bank Street Armory building for future use, so development in the best interests of the city can one day succeed. With a plan for the structure that complements the area, we believe this iconic downtown building could once again be a neighborhood centerpiece for the city and its residents. Thanks to recent city projects and funds allocated to the property by the Community Preservation Committee, the Bank Street Armory has a preservation restriction currently attached to the deed of the building, ensuring its protection outside of municipal ownership. The Armory has been an important part of the community for more than a century, first as a home for local armed garrison, and then as a venue for city events and programs still treasured in the memories of many Fall River residents. Our members believe that if historic buildings such as the Armory are preserved and repurposed for the worlds of today, they will continue to bring immeasurable benefits to the city of Fall River tomorrow. Sincerely, Preservation Society of Fall River.
Just, Councilor Pelletier joined us. I want to just do a quick mic check, Councilor, you can hear us, okay, right?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Can, thank you very much. Madam Clark?
Thank you.
And lastly, we have from Melissa Costa of two fifty one Renaud Street. Members of the City Council, I am writing to address what has become a pattern over the last several months by elected officials, which is to unfriend or block citizens and residents of this city whom they represent if that person has contesting views or asks challenging questions. Two federal court rulings have concluded that elected officials cannot block constituents on their social media. I've included a deeper dive into those two rulings in this email for you to read, as I only have three minutes for input, and I have one more topic to cover. If an elected official clearly uses their page to engage with other voters, clarify reasons for votes, et cetera, then that social media account has all the hallmarks of public forum. I'm also writing about the weekly Trump back the blue rallies held in front of the police station at six eighty five Pleasant Street. In fact, that is the address used in the events emails and social media posts. Although these may be organized by campaign volunteers, I find it deeply troubling in the times we're in that FRPD has not asked them to move down to the right or left, as it gives the appearance that the police department is endorsing a candidate for office. They represent all taxpaying residents of this city regardless of political party. These are also back the blue rallies, so why wouldn't they oblige if the request had been made? These rallies are attended by many of the same people consistently and streamed on Facebook Live. I've watched them park in front of the police parking lot, unload their flags, and even stick those flags in the grass at the station. Conversely, there have been numerous standouts for Black Lives Matter movement, in which people have had entire streets closed to them, and last week someone was arrested for stepping off the curb. The attendees of these Trump back the blue rallies can be seen just this past weekend with their toes at the edge of the curb waving flags out into the public street, which is dangerously distracting to drivers. This is a very difficult time in the country, and no one should feel intimidated to walk into a police station in a very diverse city, and I feel this is intimidating and would argue from a voter, a form of voter intimidation. People are afraid of being targeted for having different views. I ask that even though I don't want anyone's First Amendment right to be violated, I believe more could be done to avoid discord and mistrust in our community. Additional info, that followed a Fourth Circuit case decided in January in which a local official blocked demand from a government Facebook page because of a man's criticism of the county school board. If, in its opinion, the appeals court observed that the page had all the hallmarks of public forum and that blocking access was black letter viewpoint discrimination. That was the First Circuit Court ruling on the First Amendment's application to government-run social media accounts. The basic lesson from these cases is that once a public official opens a social media account and uses it to interact in an official capacity with users, the account qualifies as a public forum under the First Amendment, and the public official may not exclude users on the basis of viewpoint. Counselors who blocked me were Christopher Peckham, Brad Kilby, and Paul Hart, school committee member, and Alan Sylvia, my state representative. And that's all we have.
Madam Clark? Thank you. I'm just so everybody's aware, what I'm going to do is, I know that, Mr. Perry, you are here to speak on the-
Item number three, Councilor.
Soil Management Project. Item three, right. I'm going to be moving you to the waiting room, just so that it's a clearer visual for people at home. I just did the same thing with Chris at Republic, just so you're aware. So I'll be bringing them back in, just so it's a clearer screen for those who are watching at home. First item on our agenda, second item on our agenda this evening is a discussion with the financial services, Director Financial Services and a representative from Roselli Clark and Associates for their findings on the two thousand and nineteen end of year independent audit. Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, good afternoon. Certainly, good afternoon, councils, Council President and counselors. We have with us this evening Taranzio, he is with the firm of Roselli and Clark and Associates. They performed our fiscal two thousand and nineteen audit and issued their financial statements in a timely manner, but due to the pandemic, they were unable to have this meeting with the council as it's required by the charter. So they are here this evening to speak specifically to the fiscal two thousand and nineteen audit, although at this particular time, they have already been in city government and are working on the fiscal twenty audit. So Taranzio, you can take over and, you know, give us an update with regard to an overview, I should say, with regard to nineteen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, my name is Taranzio Volpecchelli, I'm a certified public accountant, and I represent the firm of Roselli, Clark, and Associates. We have been engaged to perform a financial statement audit of your two thousand and nineteen financial statements for which we issued a report dated February twenty fourth. As, as Mr. Sahadi has indicated, we actually issued that report, I believe it was Saint Patrick's Day, and it was the next day that the stay-at-home orders were ordered. So this is a bit unusual to be performing this review at such a late period of time, however, these are unusual times. I have provided for you folks a number of documents. One of them was what we call our required communication letter, that is what today's date, it's a three-page letter, and it spells out the required communications that certified public accountants need to make with those charged in governance, which we, you folks, at the conclusion of an audit. You have the full text of the letter, I won't bore you with too much with it, however, I will go over just some of the salient points. Management, which includes Mary and all of you folks, is responsible for the selection and use of the appropriate accounting policies within the city in its financial statements. We noted no changes in any of the accounting policies within two thousand and nineteen. Accounting estimates are an integral part of any financial statement audit. The most crucial and significant accounting estimates, which require a significant degree of judgment, pertain to your pension liabilities, your OPEB liabilities, and your allowances for doubtful accounts, and those have been detailed within the required communication letters. I am pleased to report that we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing or completing our audits. For the purposes of this discussion, a disagreement with management is something that has to do with financial accounting reporting for an auditing matter. Pleased to report that we had no such disagreements during the course of our audit. Management of the city provided us certain representations, which were dated in the letter, February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty. And as discussed in Note Five of the financial statements, there were a number of prior period adjustments that were made to the city's beginning net position. Many of these were simple reclassifications between funds, some of them were differences in accounting. We refer to you to those audited financial statements. I'm going to share a screen, I have a brief presentation to go over. Can you all see this?
Yep, we can.
So once again, my name is Taranzio Volpecchelli. The required communications that we just described, we've been provided to you in detail, and we just talked about some of the high-level contents of that letter. Some of the other contents of this report, we'll talk about some of the macroeconomic trends, some of the microeconomic trends, those are the ones that are affecting you as a community, a summary of financial conditions, what's going on with your long-term obligations, and then leave some time for some Q and A. As discussed, we touched upon a lot of these, we were engaged to perform a financial statement audit. That's not a forensic audit, it's a financial statement audit. We use generally accepted auditing standards, as well as the governmental auditing standards, which are issued by the comptroller general of the United States in performing our financial statement audit. Once again, the most significant accounting estimates affecting your financial statements surround your pension liabilities, your OPEB liabilities, and the allowances for doubtful accounts. Again, we're pleased to report that there were no reportable difficulties or disagreements with management, and the full context of that letter has been provided to you all. As we all know, COVID nineteen has really created quite a, stirred up markets in calendar two thousand and twenty. The debt and equity markets were rocked in the first quarter. In fact, March had some of the most historic drops in the history of the stock market. April, May, June had some of the most historic increases on the stock market. Much of what was lost during that period has been recovered. What has not recovered yet is unemployment rates in the state of Massachusetts. The last four quarters, as published by the Office of Labor Workforce Development, are listed out on the screen, you can see that we went from two point eight to two point nine in the first calendar quarter, and then in June, we had seventeen point seven percent unemployment throughout the state. Happy to say that that has come down significantly and, you know, is continuing to improve. The statewide regulations surrounding business and municipal school operations are very fluid, as you folks have decided to, to have this meeting remotely. Previous meetings may have been in person, we know Boston Public Schools has just recently decided to go remote, for remote with their schooling for the next couple of weeks. So it's definitely a fluid environment that we're in. And then on the macroeconomic, there's an election uncertainty, and that always affects what is happening with the local economy, as well as municipal operations. On a micro level, so those affecting the city, you can expect lower fiscal two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty one, you know, again, it's funny talking about two thousand and twenty, here we are already in two thousand and twenty one, but some of the areas that you expect to see is hotel meals and excise taxes, motor vehicle, I've consistently observed this throughout Massachusetts. We've already been in probably a dozen communities doing audits for the year. I only have one community that actually had an uptick in motor vehicle excise taxes. Everyone else has, has been down. And then number of user charges, particularly that might run through some of your special revenue funds, you can expect that there will be a decrease. Fortunately, the Commonwealth has committed to level funding two thousand and twenty one state aid, but there's a caveat, they haven't formalized their budget yet, and that's probably unlikely until after the November elections, that there'll be a finalized budget at the state level. The market for municipal general obligation bonds has been spotty. In fact, if you try to go out in April, would have been really difficult for you to make any general obligation bond sales. We have seen an improvement, have a number of clients who recently completed some refundings and some, some new obligations, so there definitely has been an improvement there. You've obviously incurred additional one-time COVID nineteen costs, and there are some federal funds that are available to cover those costs. Miss Sahadi is keenly aware of the limitations on that, because there are a lot of limitations. Moving on, in a couple of months, your retirement system will end its fiscal year, they're on a calendar basis, they will have the evaluation done as of one one two thousand and twenty one, so essentially, it's going to have the December thirty first, two thousand and twenty investment performance. If I were giving this presentation in April, I would have thought it would have been ludicrous that there might be a positive return in calendar two thousand and twenty. It may be possible. It is unlikely that the retirement system will match its targeted return of seven point two five percent for the year. It did in calendar nineteen, due north of fifteen percent, so it was quite a robust year, and you did reap the benefits, you had a slight uptick in your funded ratio as a result, but it would be unlikely that it would meet that threshold this year. Certainly, the OPEB investment account, because of the timing, wouldn't keep pace with its discount rate of three point seven five percent. Some of that has to do with the market, some of it has to do with the composition of its investments at this point. It's still, it's still a pretty young program, a young trust. Undoubtedly, you've had changes to your general budget, capital plans, and whatnot, but there was a silver lining, there is lower energy prices during all of this, as right around the same time, we had a oil pricing war between Saudi Arabia, the United States, Russia, and whatnot, as well as, you know, a supply-demand imbalance, which has created a glut of natural gas, oil, and has caused energy prices worldwide to come down. Moving on to a summary of your financial condition, again, entering into fiscal two thousand and twenty, the city came in with roughly six point five million dollars in general stabilization funds within its three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and EMS, there was roughly two point eight million, and it came into two thousand and twenty with three million dollars of certified free cash. I understand that you folks recently had just your free cash certified as of seven one twenty twenty for fiscal twenty one, and that was at roughly two point two million. Your two thousand and nineteen budgets, revenues rather exceeded its budget by roughly one point four million, and your expenditures were roughly one point five million lower than budget, you did a very good job managing two thousand and nineteen. As a result, the reserve ratio, and that's, that's a term that's used by credit rating agencies, it is the ratio of your unassigned and assigned fund balances within your general fund to your normal operations, operating expenses in your general fund, that increased from three point three percent to four point five percent, which is, which is quite a hefty increase, given the size of the city. And in speaking with your, your city auditor, as, as Miss Sahadi had mentioned, we have done some preliminary work out there, it's been principally focused on transactional testing, we will be coming out there in, I believe it's January, to start doing year-end audit. But in speaking with your city auditor, she indicated that there was some sizable budget turnbacks within fiscal two thousand and twenty. Moody's rated your February obligation sale at an A three, that is investment grade, does signify to investors that the city has a strong ability to repay its debt, which gives you a much better credit rating than if you couldn't repay your debt. Moving on, a two-year trend of some of your long-term obligations, this is not a comprehensive listing, this is just some of the significant items. You can see a temporary note have increased significantly, that's primarily due to your school construction, long-term debt had actually come down, again, timing was to when you're going to take on your long-term debt, particularly for the high school construction project. Net OPEB come down slightly within your governmental activities. Pension went up in two thousand and nineteen, because that's based on the twelve thirty one eighteen pension. I would expect that, actually, I know that the two thousand and twenty will come down, because you had a spectacular investment performance, you went from, you know, fifteen, north of fifteen percent return, so that, that will pay some dividends within the city's financials. And we have the same metrics, same figures for your sewer, water, and EMS funds. Oftentimes, people talk about the quote-unquote unfunded liabilities of government, your two principal categories of those will be the pension and your OPEB. Again, the pension, this was, includes as of twelve thirty one, that is the full pension plans, that includes housing, vocational schooling, and the redevelopment, but it was at a funded ratio of forty percent, I do believe that that was, there was an uptick on that in your, didn't mean to do that, in your December thirty first, two thousand and nineteen. December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. And again, in two thousand nineteen, you all had just started funding for OPEB. Um, put in a hundred thousand dollars into the program. Uh, two thousand dollars in investment income. Uh, I understand in fiscal twenty, um. You all put in about another four hundred and thirty somewhat thousand dollars into the program, into the trust rather. Um, it's, it's a great start, um, to funding this, this, uh, this long-term liability. Then finally, we did a debt comparison of just, uh, of some of the, uh. Possible comparable communities. Obviously, New Bedford is right up the road, uh, Framingham is a, is a good-sized, uh, community. Um, Lowell, uh, Brockton, and then Worcester is the second largest in the state. Uh, making comparisons to Boston would not be appropriate. But you can see where your, and the, the, all the, the source of all this is from the Department of Revenue's website. Um, your debt to equalized value is, uh, is, is a little bit higher than the other folks. Uh, your debt services part of the general fund is kind of right in the ballpark of everyone else. And your debt per capita, uh, is roughly twenty five, uh, twenty seven hundred dollars per person. And you can kind of see that kind of, that floats all around with these other communities.
All right. Thank you very much. Um. And can everybody hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
You hear me okay? Okay. Any questions, um, for our, um. Director of Financial Services or our auditing firm? Anybody have, uh, Counselor Kelly, if you could just unmute yourself, please? Just unmute yourself.
You did.
Bottom left-hand corner of your screen. Just, I'm, if we unmute button.
I'm sorry. You hear me? I, yeah, the only question it has, uh, about the unfunded pension liability, you, you made it seem like it was, uh, we're in a positive, uh. Positive pattern. Um. Sorry about the question. I appreciate your time, but, uh, the unfunded pension liability in the city. You, you, uh, you made a comment that you thought that we were in a, kind of in a positive mode, so.
Well, what I was referring to is.
I want to.
Two thousand nine.
Pardon? I don't want to put you on a spot, but I'm just asking.
What I was referring to was at December thirty first of two thousand nineteen versus two thousand eighteen, there was an uptick. Um. In your funded ratio, it was positive. Uh, your funded ratio, you can go on the, um, uh, Public Employee Retirement Administrative Com- uh, Commission's website. And you can benchmark yours versus the rest of the state. Um, you folks are in the, the bottom half of the state. Uh, based on the last series of valuation reports. I'll be very frank with you. They are behind in updating that information. Um, that's really the only way I can benchmark you against the other, um, pension systems. But, um, two thousand nineteen was a positive year.
Oh, yeah. So nineteen was a positive year?
Yes, it was a positive year.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Mary. That's a lot of your, your work that's, uh. I think that it's kind of trying, crying to, uh, trying to chop down that big tree like one, um. One ax at a time, so to speak.
Yes, thank you, Counselor. And it really is team effort in terms of the finances, the city auditor, the assessors, treasurer, collector, they all participate. Um, quite a bit in making sure that all the books and records are reconciled timely. And the reporting to you and the quarterly reports is all done timely.
Okay, I, um, I just want to, um. I don't want to sound like Sean Kadeem, my friend, more of an expert than I am in this stuff, but. I know the unfunded pension liability is a, is a huge issue. And, um, maybe not during my lifetime, maybe, but I think it's something that's, is going to blow up in our face eventually. Um, whether there's a reform, um, in the pension system, uh, within the state, uh, in the state legislature or not. But, Larry, are you going to say something?
Yeah, I was certainly, Counselor. So we are on track to be fully funded. Um, before we're actually required to be fully funded, the state requires us to be fully funded by the year twenty forty. And we're on track to be fully funded by, I believe it's twenty thirty five. So we actually have a little bit of a leeway if the market does drop significantly, but, um. It is correct. We're only at forty percent in terms of the funded ratio. So we have a ways to go, but let's hope we have another good year.
Just as long as people understand what that, what that is, um. I don't have to teach you, but. That means in terms of people retiring. Whether we have enough in a pension fund to pay for their pensions. People are living longer, um, and, uh. Uh, thank, thank goodness for that. And we just have to make sure we, when people retire, with me, it's probably going to be with the next ten years, I think, I hope. But usually, uh. People in my field, uh, you know, work a lot later in life. Um, just so I just hope and pray that, uh, that. You know, the money's going to be there to, to, to help the people that work so hard to retire, so.
Mr. Kilby, if I could just add something to that, uh, you have an independent actuary. Um, and it's the state actuary that, uh, works at PEREC, um, that. Determines your total pension liability. My job is to come up with what's the assets, so we subtract the two. And they use a number of actuarial assumptions. And included in those assumptions are, are mortality tables. Those mortality tables do contemplate. People living longer. They get modified over time. So we're not using the same mortality tables from nineteen eighty seven or nineteen ninety seven or even two thousand and seven.
It's an insurance policy.
Yeah, yeah.
It's basically getting insurance policy, yeah.
So, uh, so there, there are updates to it that hopefully contemplate this.
Yeah. Thank you. I yield, Mr. President. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Counselor Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, uh, piggyback on Counselor Kilby's terms, um, or in regard to. The pensions and that mortality table that you had talked about. One of the issues that we've always discussed, um, at least in, in the city council, is the fact that the state is essentially doing our evaluations. Uh, for the pension, uh, as opposed to having an independent firm coming in that's not overseeing. So we've got PEREC overseeing our pensions and doing the. Um, actuaries that I, I've always maintained has, has, in my opinion, has been an issue. Part of the issue too has been that, that mortality rate, that they tend to be a little bit more conserve, conservative that other communities, um, are not. And from my standpoint, do you know, uh, based on, and I know you're throwing some comparisons through other communities. Do you happen to know, um, roughly how many communities are actually utilizing PEREC as their actuarial?
I believe it's one-third of all the public pension systems. There's roughly a hundred and five public pension systems in the state. I believe they do thirty to thirty-five of them.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and typically you would, you would agree their mortality rates are, tend to be, uh, a little. I guess for a lack of better words, a little, a little bit skewed, uh, in terms of driving some of the, uh, the numbers up, obviously, driving up.
Some are more conservative than others. That is, that is for sure. There are, there are certainly more aggressive. Um. When you, when you run these numbers, time is, is a, is a big consideration, the discount rate, the time to maturity, and in this case. Twenty forty and the, the future funding is, is, is really going to impact what, what these calculations are. Obviously mortality i- is involved in there, um. Uh, future pay increases, uh, because, uh, the more, the higher the rate of pay that your, your misemployees are getting paid. The higher rate they're going to be paid out later in life. So there's a lot of assumptions that are involved. And a lot of these are refined year in and year out.
So can I, can I ask a question? Is, is there a, a document that's either provided by PEREC? Or is there any type of documentation that the city council can obtain that would show exactly what the mortality, mortality, uh, table is that PEREC's using? Versus some other, um. Other communities and in particular, obviously broken down by police, fire, uh, individuals of that because. I, I'm just curious to see, uh, where their mortality rate is, uh, a- and again, I, I know we're going to be. But we're on schedule to be fully funded by, uh, twenty thirty five. However, you know, those numbers are driving, driving our unfunded liabilities up. Um, you had just mentioned also with the concerns of, of covid coming in. At the election. Where the stock market is going to be in terms of our, our, uh, rate of return. I think, I think you said we're at, we're at fifteen percent or something like that. That.
That we. Your actual return in two thousand nineteen was north of fifteen percent. Your, your forecasted returns within the program, within your. Um, valuation is, I believe, seven point two five percent.
Yeah.
That was another. That was another issue that I've always contended with PEREC, right, is, is that they tend to print out these, these books for all the communities, have pensions, what their rate of return is. And we've always been, at least since I've seen these books. Uh, ten percent or higher when our rate of return and PEREC has always forecasted our rate of return at six. Five or four percent, which is obviously driving some additional issues, uh, that we've maintained. Now, I know the pension, uh, uh, board is completely outside of our jurisdiction, uh, but again, I think it's important for us to. Continue to push to have, and I know I sound like a broken record, but continue to have the retirement board, the Florida Retirement Board. Use somebody other than, uh, the state to do our actuaries. I, I think we're, I, I'm all for being conservative. Uh, you know, I, I, I say this all the time that we need to be conservative in our budgetary standpoint. But when we're, when we're really projecting, you know, six or eight percent and we're, and we're on. Par for, you know, a ten-year average of ten-plus percentage, uh, on a rate of return. I think we need to start adjusting those numbers so that we can see our liabilities kind of reduce because on. On the tail ends, we're, we're funding a pension, uh, plan. That is really, obviously clearly, um, you know, a, a, a schedule that's. Not incorporating the true rate of return that we're having. And, and I get we're not going to be able to predict it. Uh, going down the line and then there's some fluctuation, but I'd like to see it at least get us to, uh, at least a twenty-year norm, if, if, if not a ten-year norm. Uh, and, 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 you know, having a couple of percentage points, uh, you know, added to the, to that for the rate of return would. Help drastically reduce some of our pension liability. That's.
C- Counselor, I certainly agree with you and, um, I know we've talked about it, um, a number of times with regard to. Um, getting a different firm to do the actuarial report. Um, for the mortality tables, they're using the, the industry rate, mortality table, but you are a hundred percent correct. It's, it's the other assumptions. That are being included in the document that are skewing it to a much more conservative. Approach than some of the other companies that, um, actually do actuaries throughout the state.
Right. For a community like us, when we're, when we're struggling to balance our budgets with the revenues coming in. Struggling to meet, you know, net school spending, if we can reduce the payments that's going over to, uh, you know, the pension board to, to reflect a more accurate payment plan. You know, I, I think from my standpoint, that's something we should be looking to do. Again, you know, truly outside of our control, I know. Uh, the city has one vote, uh, she sits on the, um, or whoever the auditor is, sits on the. Retirement board, but that's, that's only one vote, so.
And it's, right.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'd urge my colleagues to continue to, you know, with the administration to, to push the retirement board to strongly consider. Looking, looking into utilizing another actuarial firm.
Uh, Mr. Kadeem, I would, I would point to page forty-nine of sixty-five in the audited financial statements. Um, you'll see what's called a sensitivity analysis. Of what one percentage point difference. In your discount rate would have on your total net pension liability. If it were a one percent increase, so we went from seven point two five to eight point two five. Your, your liability would decrease by fifteen percent. And conversely, the other way would go up eighteen percent by a one percent decrease. So there is, there is a sensitivity analysis within the financial statements. And getting back to your original question, do I know of a resource within PEREC that, uh, benchmarks the mortality tables used? Within the hundred and five, I do not. What they do provide is essentially discount rates. And funded ratios. You can find that information relatively quickly and it actually exports very nicely into itself. Um, but, but that other metric, I, I can't speak to. Um. The conventional wisdom within the industry is everyone is lowering their discount rate. Uh, we don't see increases. Uh, if we look back, uh, ten years, pretty much everybody used eight percent. Mary, about eight percent everyone was using. And it's been slowly coming down. I have a community that's at six point seven five. They happen to be eighty-five percent funded. They have the luxury of doing that. Um, most of. Which are almost the same size as Fall River. Fall River is quite large. They tend to be right around between seven point three and seven point six five. I think what's the counties at seven point six five? They just released their actuarial study, uh. I think it was on Thursday. I'm curious where Plymouth County is coming out. Um. Bristol County is at, I believe, seven and a half. So, uh. That, that's the trend.
And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree that at this point that we really want to try to increase that, that rate of return, but if we, if we were to go back. You know, even just over a five-year period, you know, when our, our rate of return was significantly lower than what we were actually. Seeing from the historic standpoint and the actu, the actuaries, the actuals that were coming in for a rate of return. You know, I think some of our payments would have been, uh, reduced for our, obviously our general fund. Year-over-year, um, contributions to, to the pension, which would have helped alleviate some of our financial concerns that we've had. Um, as, as a city council and, and as an administration and in total, so. With that, I, I appreciate it. I, I thought the presentation was great. I, I like the, uh, the comparative analysis to other communities. I think it was very insightful, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Olley, did you have your hand raised?
Uh, yes, sir. I just, um, we, we, when we're talking about. How much we pay into retirement and what we, and, and what we have to pay to other parts of our city. Um, and, and really the la- you know, the last person you spoke with just, um, you know, illustrated that, that. We, if we don't make these changes, we'll do something to, um, to reduce that. Um, we're, we're paying more into this than we are into like fixing roads and, you know. Fire and police and things like that in some, in some cases. Um, so I, I really feel like this was necessary and, and if we can do this, you know, on a somewhat regular basis, um, get an analysis and see where we are in things and. What improvements we're making, um, it's only going to benefit us overall. Um, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Kilby?
Uh, no, I, I, I'll yield for now, but I, I, I would just ask a basic question, um, to our, um. You know. Am I unmuted, Mr. President?
Why, yes.
Um, if you could give us a grade. Um, A to F. Financially, I know it's a tough question how we are right now, but if we hired you to do the audit. I, I saw you roll your eyes. Uh, and you.
It's an easy way for me to get fired, yeah.
Loss and the A minus and the D and the D minus. Um, but this is what you get paid for, my friend. So what grade would you give us, uh, how we are, uh, standing at this point in time?
Brad, you received, with the exception of the, um. The exclusion of the, uh, redevelopment authority, you received an, um, unmodified opinion. That's a. I can't, I have professional standards. I really can't do that. Um, you received an unmodified opinion with the exception of the, the absence of the, um. Uh, redevelopment authority being included in the, uh, in the financials.
Um. So how, no, I'm, I'm charged. How are we doing? Uh, well, let's.
I actually, I, I spent some time and I mentioned it to Mary. I think some of your, some of your procedures are actually very, very good, particularly for its size.
You to give us the, this is why the C hired you to give us. I'm not a financial expert, but we hired you to give us this answer. You're, you, you're an auditor, right? So I wanted.
I provided you, and I provided an opinion within the financials. Um, I can't speak that the, 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 the systems are actually in very good order. There were a number of, um. Matters that we discussed with management, um. That, uh, that, that could stand improvement, particularly the size of your IT staff. Um, it's amazing what they get done with so few people. Um, their customer base is quite large and there's only.
The answers I. These are the, oh, these are the answers I want from you as a city council, how we can do things.
Okay, that, that I can, that I can, uh, I can expound upon, uh, giving you a grade A, A through F, um. Um, I really can't, but yeah, I, I, we, we discussed a number of points with, with management. Um, very, very good systems throughout. We, uh, provided a number of areas that there might be some, uh, operating efficiencies. Um, but, um, the one area that I would like to talk about is the size of your IT staff in-house. For what? The amount of work that they do and the number of their internal customers is quite low. Um, for size, you know.
Okay, well, I, I don't, again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I appreciate your work, as Councillor Kadim said, and thank you for appearing in the course.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ferrara? Unmute yourself, councillor. Unmute yourself, councillor.
Yep, that's the question that I was going to ask you, that usually we get management letters that'll tell us what areas, you know, we could do a little bit better on. And, you know, there was, wasn't management letters here, usually we've seen those. So if you're saying that one of the suggestions that you would have would be to increase in the ID, IT department, what would you look at as being the number that we should increase? Two positions, three positions? Do you have a feeling on that?
I would have to defer to the professionals within the IT organization. Do have outside IT consultants that particularly on the security side, they would probably be more, more apt to answer that. We did, again, we didn't issue any management letter this year because of what was going on, but we did discuss all, all of our matters with management. And.
We've always got management letters, so that was a question that I had in the past.
I'm sorry, would you please repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
I said, in the past, we normally get management letters attached, and then we can see where, you know, where we could do a little bit better, where we're doing really good. I mean, usually we get those. I did speak with Mrs. Sahadi about this, and she did share with me that the IT department, the feeling was that it was a little understaffed. And honestly, with COVID, our IT department has been working above and beyond, so I can, I can understand that as well. But thank you very much for your time, sir. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions?
I don't have any.
Very none. Thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate it. There are no further questions, that will conclude this. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to bring in the individuals from Republic and Mr. Perry at this time. Give him a minute to bring them back into our meeting. Next item on our agenda is a discussion of the proposed soils management project to be conducted by Brown's Barris Industries in conjunction with the City of Fall River. Mrs. Sahadi?
Um, yes, yes, thank you, councillor. So one of the requirements for the permitting is to have the company provide us with a understanding of the program itself and to provide the public with an understanding of the program itself. This program is very similar, if not identical, to the prior program where we had included and received as a partner with this, with Republic, $1 million in revenue, non-recurring revenue. We have included in the FY '21 budget, $400,000 in the same category, which you have seen when you pass the budget. However, due to the pandemic, like everything else, this process has taken a little bit longer to go forward than one anybody would have liked to. So we're here tonight so that they could explain the program to each of you and hopefully be able to move forward on the permitting so that we can start work at the site.
Who would like to go first?
Yeah, guys, I'll, I'll open it up, but I, I'd like to share my screen, because I do have a presentation, if that.
Yep, go ahead.
Can everybody see the slide?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Well, good evening, members of the, members of the council. For the folks that don't know me on the call, my name's Chris Messera, I'm the Municipal Services Manager with Republic Services. Also on the call is Nick Stepcovich, who's the Market Vice President for Republic Services. And we have Mike Quattramani from Site Tech, who's our engineer, who's working on this project and also worked on the previous project. So thanks for your time for letting us on, and, and as Mary mentioned, you guys probably do recall, we, we had a similar project a few years back that was very successful. It was a great partnership between Republic Services and the city as well, and, and this, as we'll kind of show you, is somewhat similar in nature, and probably the big, the big differences we'll kind of get into is the, is really the level of the classification of soil, and then really kind of the post-closure plans as we, as we kind of flow through this. So in terms of the project summary, it's a, it's a soils management project. It's going to include the acceptance of, of what we call a mildly impacted soil at the closed for of a landfill. The project is governed by Mass DEP, and it's, it falls under what they call COM-15, which is an interim policy for the reuse of soil for large reclamation projects. In, in the way it's really going to work is we're going to regrade a portion of the closed landfill with a suitable soil in preparation for a, a post-closure use of the landfill. That post-closure is going to include leveling of that site with eventually seeding. And then one of the benefits, and if you come down to the bottom of the slide, it's going to give us the ability to provide solar, solar panels on the landfill. The site will be better situated to handle that, which is certainly going to be a, a much better benefit for, for, for everybody. And again, Mass DEP does govern the project, and, and one of the parts of the, of the requirement of the application is we need to hold a meeting such as this. And what it does, it affords the local officials aware of the project, have been afforded the opportunity for, for meaningful, meaningful input and, and any questions you may have, which will certainly, certainly entertain at the end of the, end of the presentation. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Mike from Site Tech kind of run through the soil acceptance criteria. Mike, you're just probably going to have to come off mute. He's going to run through that, and we've also got a couple of slides that are going to go to show the, the, some, some illustrations of the landfill, what it's going to look, and probably more importantly, it's going to show you the elevation, how it's related to the current position of the landfill as well. So, Mike, if you want to jump in and run through the soil.
Mike, you can just unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. I wrote down some notes on the next several slides, and it got a little long, but I'll try to go through it quickly. The soil to be accepted will come from mainly commercial development projects and will contain very low concentrations of contaminants. When the concentrations are low and do not exceed DEP's threshold, the soils are determined suitable for projects such as this. DEP's threshold are referred to as MCP reportable concentrations with the designations of RCS1 and RCS2. Only soil not exceeding these thresholds will be accepted. No other materials such as solid waste or hazardous waste will be brought in, strictly soil meeting that criteria. All of the soil accepted will be subjected to laboratory testing according to a soils management plan that will be written and then approved by the DEP. The plan will designate the testing needed for the soil, how often it gets tested, and the acceptable limits for the project. Contractors that want to bring soil to the site will need to request approval from BFI. They do this by submitting a soil profile package to BFI. The profile will include all of the data from the required testing accompanied by an opinion letter from an environmental professional that is certified by the DEP as an LSP. That stands for Licensed Site Professional. And the opinion letter is certifying that the soil meets the project's acceptance criteria. When received, the profile will be reviewed by a second LSP that'll be hired by BFI. So this is another check to make sure that it's certainly suitable soil. And if BFI's LSP confirms that it meets the thresholds, an acceptance letter will be issued, and no soil will be moved to the site without an acceptance letter. So essentially, all soil profiles will be reviewed by two LSPs for conformance with the acceptance plan. We can go to the next slide, Chris?
Yep, you got it.
This slide is the overall site plan for the landfill and the surrounding areas. Just for orientation, the airport road is on the left, Commerce Drive is above the top of the page, and Innovation Way is shown down the bottom. The green area is the existing closed landfill. The small shaded brown area on the left is the proposed soil management area. You can see a solid line running through the soil management, management, management area, and that's actually a property line, and the property to the left is owned by the City of Fall River, and obviously the property on the right is owned by BFI. So that's the, that gives you the location of it. The next slide is actually a cross-section, so you can see its elevations. Once again, the green area is the existing landfill, and the brown is the soil management area. As can be seen, the soil management area will not be filled to a height, to the height of the existing landfill. In fact, it will be 78 feet lower, and is not expected to be visible from the surrounding streets. The height of the existing landfill is elevation 402, mean sea level, and the maximum height of the soil management area will be 324, as shown on the plan. The incoming soil will overlay a portion of the landfill known as Phase 1, and it will not expand out laterally, so the footprint of the landfill as it stands right now will not get any bigger. It's just filling up along the side slopes that will give us the volume for this project. When the filling is complete, the area will be covered with 12 inches of topsoil and seeded to grow grass prior to the development of the solar project. There's no infrastructure construction needed for this project. Access roads are in place, and there's a comprehensive stormwater management system that controls stormwater runoff from the entire landfill. So on the next slide is a general summary, and approximately 708,000 cubic yards or roughly a million tons of soil will be used to fill and grade the area, maximizing the southerly facing slope. It's likely that this will take four to five years, depending on the availability of the soil. Once again, the maximum elevation of the project does not exceed the height of the existing landfill, and only soils meeting the low thresholds of RCS1 and RCS2 will be accepted.
Thanks, Mike. And then just again, to probably really highlight the, the project benefits, there's, there's a couple of main benefits to, to this project. The first is, is obviously prepares the site for the future post-closure project in getting the solar energy project up and running on that, on that site. And then secondly, you know, this is obviously a, a partnership between Republic Services and the City of Fall River. And the, the City of Fall River will participate in a revenue share program per ton on the volume that we bring in there. Well, so it's, it's a nice economic benefit for the city as well.
Right. Is there any questions at this point?
I, I have one, sir.
Councillor, Councillor Olley, followed by Councillor Ferrara?
Will we, I don't, I don't, I, maybe I didn't see it. I didn't, I don't know if I got a copy of this PowerPoint presentation. I would like to have a copy if possible.
Yeah, sure, I, I can, I can email it out, definitely.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Is that your only question?
Well, that was all.
Councillor Ferrara, please.
Yeah. Mr. Messera, I have a question.
Yes, councillor.
When we did this project several years back, it was during the Sutter administration, and at that time, they wanted to just give the land that we had over to Republic, for Republic to cap, you know, to fill. And that's the one time that I objected, because I didn't feel it was right for the city to give, you know, that many acres of land and get nothing in return. And the following morning, when I met with Mr. Sutter and told him, Ma Sutter at the time, and told him my feelings, we ended up, you know, doing a partnership with Republic, and that brought us in a million dollars. I think we had a meeting after to try to get the money back when I believe Mayor Korea was in, the second Mayor Korea, and we had some issues with what the terminology and how much money the city was going to get, but we knew it was going to be a million dollars. What did the city get per truckload? What percentage was it that we got? Do you remember?
Well, I, I, I do know it was a per-ton number with a guarantee, but I, but I don't know the exact figures off the top of my head.
But we generated a million dollars in doing that. What are we getting? What are the per-ton numbers now on this completion? And do we have a guarantee?
Yeah, if I could take that question, Chris, this is, yeah, this is Nick Stepcovich. Hi, councilperson. The, the per ton, the, the economic formula here is, is there is a guarantee of a million dollars, not less than a million dollars, from the project for the duration of the project. The formula is $2 per ton of, of revenue. So, you know, we think, you know, if it's a million dollars, if it's a million tons, we think over the life of this project that it's likely the city would get $2 million, right? If, if we fill, so. And then there's also a formula in the agreement where those payments could escalate if the revenue per unit on, on, on the material received is higher than we anticipate. I think that's like $13 a ton. So I, I wouldn't recommend the city budget, you know, excessively for those revenue flows, but there is, there is some upside in the economic formula for the city.
No, and I wouldn't want to see the city, you know, counting their, their chickens before they hatch either, and this would be extra revenue that the city would obtain without it coming from the taxpayers. That was my initial reasoning for wanting to do it several years ago, and we did get the million dollars. So I, I hope that, you know, this works out, that we get more. That would be wonderful. Now, let me ask you this. You, after this, when this project is completed, you're talking of putting solar panels on that?
Yeah, that, that's the, the planned.
Overall plan.
Post-usage for the site, but that is a separate authorization process with DEP. It's, it's just conceptual at this point.
Okay. Just that if the city could get some money out of that, I'd be in favor of that, too. Not that I want to be greedy, but I want to get as much money I can for the taxpayers.
Right. We have, we have a couple other similar projects in, in Massachusetts, and that's, that's the common structure of it. It's usually a, a partnership structure with, with the host community.
Very good. Thank you so much, and I, I must say that I have always had very good relationships, good dealings with the Republic Service, even for the community when there's events to help us out with, you know, trash receptacles, et cetera. They have been a, a good partner of being in Fall River, so I thank you for that.
All right. Thank you very much. If, if I could just, just make sure, confirm everybody follows, I think Mike Quattramoni mentioned the, the BFI company, you know, that is the legal entity for the Fall River Landfills, BFI. It's, it's a subsidiary, it's part of the overall Republic brand, parent company.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from the council? All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Mr. Perry, is there anything at all regarding this? All right, very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will conclude our, the, the on finance, your motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee. Roll call.
On adjournment, Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes. We are adjourned. We're going to go right into our full city council meeting. That's going to start right now. It is seven nineteen. Our city council meeting will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem. Dion. Here. Kilby. La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Yeah.
Pelletier.
Yeah.
Ferrera. President Ponti.
Yeah. First, everybody's here. I know there was a bit of a technical issue. Everybody, to take this moment, to maybe stand and where you are and throw a moment of prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. First item on our agenda, Madam Clerk. At this time, I just want to remind everybody that we are, once again, doing a remote access for this meeting. Second basis at City Hall, there will be a meeting by meeting basis at this point to see if there would be any changes going forward. But I will continue to work in collaboration with our Council Vice President, as well as the Clerk's Office and Florida Health to determine the status measure for us to continue to conduct the meetings. With that being said, all, I'm going to ask all the counselors at this time, if they can, to unmute themselves because we need to have roll call votes on every single item that is before us. So at that point, I just wanted to let everybody know. No citizens input currently, currently before this full council at this point, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
First order of business.
First order of business was the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of city administrator. Late this afternoon, we received notification from the mayor as city council president and members of the honorable counsel. Based on the attached email, I am asking that my request for confirmation of the appointment of David Marciallo be withdrawn from consideration for the position of city administrator in the city of Fall River. Thank you for every consideration.
To withdraw, please. Motion to withdraw has been made by Counselor. Kilby, seconded by Counselor Ferrera. Roll call.
I'm granting the item leave to withdraw. Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of Louis Ferrera to the Conservation Commission. This is actually reappointment.
I make a motion that.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I would just make a motion. I don't know if we're taking A through E. Are we doing them individually?
We can ask the reading if you'd like. You want to make a motion to take collectively all together?
I'd make a. Like to not take them together?
All right.
Okay.
Let's take it separately.
Go ahead.
Madam Clerk, first question, please.
Could be the confirmation of Louis Ferrera to the Conservation Commission.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to, that has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Ferrera, discussion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
We have the appointment, reappointment of Christopher Antayo to the Cultural Council. Motion table.
Motion, motion, motion to table has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded, or seconded. Made by Counselor Dion, roll call.
Mr. President, can I, what, what's, is there a reason for the table?
There's no, there's no discussion on a table. Move the item.
No discussion on, there is no discussion on a motion to table. That's fine. Roll call.
On the motion to table, Counselors Kadeem.
No.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
No.
Peckham.
No.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Mr. President, can I just, I mean, I just got a, a lesson on courtesy and, and, you know, some rules. Can I, can I just ask when, you know, some of my colleagues want to make a motion to table, but they just explain it before they make a motion to table?
Mr. President, there's no, there's no.
This is Zoom, Mr. Kilby, and you just.
My friend Sean.
I asked the president for the floor, so don't come back at me. Tell me I don't have the floor. I've got the floor.
I don't want to be passive aggressive, but there's no.
There's nothing passive aggressive about me, Brad. We've had this conversation before. I'm just aggressive, not passive, okay? Some, some respects for my colleagues to simply. Why they're going to table. I have no reason, no understanding why we just tabled this individual. I'd like to know, but clearly there are other colleagues.
I'll tell you right now, because I'll tell you.
Have conversations about why they tabled an item.
Well, I'll tell you right now.
I just got a lecture from.
Counselor, all right.
No, 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 no.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Stop interrupting me. I am tired of the interruption. I need you to stop interrupting each other. I am, I am telling you to stop interrupting each other and one person is going to speak. It is very challenging that when other counselors continue to speak over each other, we can't get anything accomplished. It's absolute, and you're going to continue to do it. Counselor Kilby, I have not recognized you. And I have not asked you to speak. Once again, I have the floor and I'm asking for your order.
You have my order.
Well, I am asking you to stop interrupting me and other counselors. And you continue to go. I am still.
The person.
Counselor, once again, I will.
The person who made the motion.
Counselor.
The person who made.
Counselor. 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 This is the last, I'm going to remind you. I will remove you from the meeting if you continue to interrupt.
Piece of work.
Stop interrupting me. Counselor, stop. This is not how we conduct meetings, okay? I am not going to allow you, Counselor Kilby, Counselor Kilby. I am not going to allow you to continue to interrupt these meetings and interrupt Counselor's speaking. This is the last time I'm going to tell you I will remove you from the meeting and I don't want to do it. This is a Zoom meeting that is extremely challenging for all of us to speak and you continue to interrupt Counselors. Stop. When I recognize you, when I recognize you, you can speak.
Please recognize me then.
I am not recognizing you right now. Counselor Kadeem has the floor and then I will recognize you. Uninterrupted, well, uninterrupted as well.
There's no conversation after motion.
I am not. Don't you think I recognize that? You're the one having the discussion. Counselor Kadeem had a point of information. He wanted to know why there was a motion table. You don't want to give the motion. We're going to move on.
You're a piece of work.
Great, thank you. Next order of business.
Is a request for the confirmation of Donna Valenti to the Cultural Council.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Ferrera, discussion. Counselor Dion.
Yes. I appreciate being able to speak. I actually would have preferred to have spoken prior to the last vote, however, even though I was in favor of the table. My point is that I don't know who on the council, how many people in the council is, are aware of how significant the Cultural Council is. My objections aren't necessarily to who the people are on the council or who the reappointees are. However, these people are in charge of state funding for projects that have to do with arts and culture. We have a P, a CPA and a CDA who often comes before us to tell us about their funding, their projects, who they approve, who they, they don't approve. They explain to us what their, um, um, you know, what the process is for, for obtaining these funds. And this committee doesn't do that. I'm not sure if anybody's aware that they actually approved forty-four projects last year at over a hundred thousand dollars. I personally, when it comes to a committee or a council like this, would be appreciative if the people could come before us so we could ask them questions, so they could fill us in on what their obligations are. The governor in 2021 has set aside over sixteen million dollars across the Commonwealth to fund these councils across the Commonwealth. And, you know, I think that, you know, I for one would just like to know that these people do know exactly what they funded, you know, how, what the process is. How many, how many projects were funded last year that haven't come to fruition? You know, are, are there, are there funds out there that, that weren't expelled because of COVID? And now they have those in addition to this year's funds? So because of all those questions and the fact that I think it's a significant council that's handling a significant amount of state funds, I would like to see these, that's the reason I'd like to see both of these tabled so we could have people come to a future meeting and get some clarification and, and some understanding of exactly what's going on in our community. Thank you. With that, I yield.
All right, and we've heard the discussion on this item. Currently on our, on before us right now, Madam Clerk, correction, we're on, is a motion to approve, correct?
To confirm the appointment, yes.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made and there has been a second on that motion. Roll, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, with that, if, I don't know what anybody's other opinion is, but with that, I would make a motion to table for the reasons that I stated so that we could have this discussion at a finance meeting at another city council regular meeting.
Second.
Motion to table has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Vice President LeBeau. Roll call.
On the motion to table, Counselors Kadeem.
Counselor Dion, I appreciate your one sentence statement for the reason for to table. I approve the motion to table.
Counselor Dion.
Yes.
Counselor Kilby.
No.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yeah.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Item two D is the reappointment of Catherine Clarkin to the library trustees.
Motion to approve appointment.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussed. Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
And the last request is the confirmation of Fran Rackland to the library trustees. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number three is a communication from the mayor in an order requesting acceptance of the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section A, regarding change of assessment date from January one to July one.
Is there a motion? Would it be appropriate to accept the mayor's communication and adopt the order?
I'll take that motion.
Motion to accept the mayor's communication and adopt the order has been made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor. Peckham, is there discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Yes.
Ferrera.
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number four is the mayor's communication in an order transferring ownership of the Bank Street Armory to the Fall River Redevelopment Authority.
Motion to refer to real estate, please.
Motion to refer to real estate has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Counselor Dion, I see you, Counselor. You guys just have to do this once and I see your hand, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, President. I would like to say that I don't believe that we're following proper procedure on this. Under the municipal code of the city, Article three, Chapter fifty-four, Public Facilities, Article three, Armory, Fifty-four dash one oh one, Armory Commission. The Board of Park Commissioners shall have and exercise all the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the Armory Commission. The Board of Park Commissioners shall promote the city armory in a manner which will be most beneficial to the city and shall endeavor to maximize and diversify its use. My contention is based on this municipal code, this matter should be referred to the park board first before coming to us. And I am under the understanding that our corporate council is actually looking into this matter. So for those reasons, I, I don't want to stifle discussion, but ultimately would make a motion to table this item until we get clarification on that. With that, I yield.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I will amend my motion to refer this to Corporation Council. Second. Counselor Dion.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee, I believe.
Yes.
Discussion on the motion to refer to Corporation Council, a couple of counselors did ask to speak on this. Counselor Lee.
So I, I agree with the, with the motion to have Corporation Council clarify where we are in this. I believe there's some other factors involved in this as to whether or not we had, you know, if there's, if, if it does belong to us or not to, to make that transfer. However, I, what I really want to see, and, and I've had discussions with the mayor, prior discussions with the mayor on this, I want to see the Bank Street Armory become something positive again in the city. And I, and I know I'm not the only person to say that. I'm pretty sure a hundred percent of the city wants to see something good come out of the Bank Street Armory. What I'm not understanding, and I guess maybe that's what we'll get to if we do have a transfer to real estate in the future, is that if we have a buyer, if there's a potential buyer out there for, for the city, why are we transferring it to any other element? Why are we not looking to benefit the taxpayers with some type of purchase in that way? That, that's, that's the major question that I think most of us have or want to see answered. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Peckham.
To my understanding, they, it was going through the RDA because the RDA is a public and private source. So they would be able to pick the person to purchase the property directly rather than the city putting it out for bid. My original question was, is null and void now. It was pertaining to being sent to real estate. I'm in agreeance with it being sent to Corporation Council. With that, I yield.
Counselor Dion.
Yes, I agree with a lot of this conversation and I think there's plenty more to be said, but I think it needs to be reserved for another day until we determine who should speak on this first. So with that, I would move the question to refer to Corporation Council. I would, that I yield.
Counselor Vice President LeBeau. Counselor Vice President.
In our conversation with the mayor today and Mrs. Sahadi, I was in a briefing with Counselor Dion. Corporation Council is already working on it, so I'm not sure that we need to refer it to him. However, they also indicated that when they send this down to us, if it goes to real estate, that they're going to have a presentation. My issue with that is that it's such a big item that if the real estate. Uh, my issue with that is that it's such a big, um, item that if the real estate committee is in favor of it and it goes back to council, they're going to have to give the presentation all over again because there's no way nine councilors are going to either attend the meeting or watch the real estate meeting and they're all going to have questions. My suggestion would be to send it to finance and when they're ready, put it on the agenda so the full council gets the presentation.
Fair enough, thank you. Thank you. Council, Councilor Pereira?
The only addition that I'd like to make to this is after Corporation Council looks at it and if it goes to finance, I think we've got to make sure that we include preservation because we never include preservation into the discussions. So I would amend it that it be referred to Corporation Council and also that, you know, that we make sure that we notify the preservation as well. With that, I yield.
Uh, there's a, an amendment made by Councilor Pereira to also notify preservation and report to Corporation Council. The amendment? Second.
Yeah, Mr. President, just clarification, and when we say preservation, are we talking about preservation, what are we talking about?
Are you talking about CTC, Preservation Society, what are you talking about, Councilor?
Preservation Society. That sent the letter, they just sent a letter during citizen input time, if you recall. And we failed to get them involved when we sell, um, buildings. Um, so I, I just think somehow we have to make sure that they're included in the discussion.
Fair enough, Preservation, Alexander Silva sent the, uh, communication over. Um, is there a motion? Uh, you, you yield, Councilor Kadim?
No, I, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear of what we're trying to do. So when we say involving preservation, so we're just having them partake in the conversation so that they have a seat at the table? Or is there an expectation that they have some type of vote? Or are we missing a step, a step not including the Preservation Society?
Councilor Pereira, I'll allow you to, um,
I think I would just like to have them in the discussion. Corporation Council is looking into, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're looking into who has charge over the armory. So when he gets to that and it's going to go to finance, I just think that during that meeting at finance, that the Preservation Society also be included to come to hear that discussion, um, to be part of, of the discussion.
May, may I give my opinion without being muted, Mr. President? I think the motion, uh, as I made the motion.
You don't have the floor, you have the floor, no, Councilor, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor.
And I'm going to hold you out going forward.
Councilor Pereira, you have, you have the floor.
That's all I have to say, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor Kilby, floor is yours.
What I was going to say, my friend, uh, Council President, is that initially I wanted to go to real estate, I made the motion seconded, and Councilor Deion rightfully clarified my point, saying it should go for Corporation Council for an opinion. It's going to go to Corporation Council, then chances are it's going to go to real estate, so. And we're going to have the Preservation Society there at the real estate meeting, Councilor Pelletier is going to make sure that invites, uh, these individuals, so. You know, out of kindness, Councilor Deion, I, you know, let's have Corporation Council clear it up in terms of what a jurisdiction is, uh, for the process of, 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 of the transfer. And then it's going to go to real estate where all the necessary people are going to be involved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, there's a, there's, Councilor Deion?
I'm a little bit confused at this point. I was beginning to understand that perhaps, uh, there had been an amendment made that it would be referred to Corporation Council, then be sent to the, uh, finance because this way the full council would be involved in the conversation and the presentation wouldn't have to be made twice. My colleague in seat three, um, is still stating that it would go from Corporation Council to real estate. So I guess my, my question or point of order is can we clarify exactly what the motion is and where, what our intention is as to where we're going to send it? With that, I yield.
The motion on the floor right now to refer to this, to the Corporation Council, Councilor Pereira, Council, Councilor Pereira is, uh, just asking that, um, Preservation have a seat at the table for the discussion because of other sales that have happened. And it's been, the motion is right now, refer to Corporation Council, Councilor Pereira is asking that Preservation Society be involved in, not a vote, just being part of discussions. And I'm sure Attorney Ramsey would be happy to call them to receive at the table. And if it gets referred, I'm sure our Chair, Councilor Pelletier, will be happily to invite them like she has in the past.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hope that clarifies anything, too. Council Vice President?
I think we also need to have a member of the historic board there, if, if Preservation Society is going to be there. I think they both need to be there, we have two separate boards.
The Chairman of the Committee will decide who comes to the meeting.
Sorry, do I have the floor, Mr. President? I can't hear anything.
You have the floor, Councilor.
Thank you. So I would like to add that a member of the historic board be there as well.
Sure, we'll make sure.
Wherever that goes. Thank you, I yield.
Councilor Pelletier?
Uh, Mr. President, first of all, I think that, uh, the park board should be involved with this. And I think, uh, uh, due to the fact that someone is interested in, in the armory is because this individual does that for a living throughout the state. I believe they, they get the property, they rehab it, and, uh, they bring in di- different venues, uh, music, restaurants and all that stuff. But it seems to me like they already got someone. Say, look, we'd like to do this and here's the individual that would like to do it. And they gave us a package and I think everybody got a package of the beautiful pictures and remodeling and all that. Uh, so be it, but, uh, we can't just sell it to one individual. Uh, the process, if it goes through, uh, the real estate committee, that would have to advertise it. And I think if it goes to the redevelopment corporation, uh, they would take it and they could sell it and not have any bids come in and possibly give it to, or sell it to the individual that wants to come in on this, so I think it's a big move. Uh, and we've just got to watch out what we're doing and what avenue that we should take. I mean, you can send it to the Corporation Council, all will and good, and he'll say whether or not the park, uh, board has to say, hey, you guys can do it. And if they're going to give it to redevelopment corporation, uh, does it want to go there? I don't know. I think we should advertise it like we should be doing it and let the people come in, we decide what's going to happen with this, how much money is involved in this, uh, what do they go for? And how much work has to be done in there? I see some of the work that he's done and they're really done a big job because, uh, them particular armories were kind of messed up. I don't think ours is that bad, uh, but that's up to the individual, it's up to us to decide which way and how we're going to do it. So, you know, if they want to go to my committee, so be it. Corporation Council, what is he going to say? Or the park board, they got a piece of it, let us know what's going on. So it's a pretty complex thing and, uh, we just go out, try to do the right thing. With that, I yield for now, thank you.
Councilor Pereira?
I, you know, I think we're doing a little bit of overthinking here. Because couldn't it just go to Corporation Council? Because Corporation Council is already looking at it, we know he's already looking into this matter. So we don't need a resolution to go there because that's what he's doing. So if it goes to Corporation Council and he comes back with an opinion, then let it come back to the full council as a priority matter and then we'll talk about it there, so. I, I, I think everybody's doing a little bit of overthinking. But I agree that I think Preservation, Historic, et cetera, you have these committees and commissions and boards in the city and sometimes I feel that we're not utilizing them to their full potential. And they should be, um, you know, on board to be transparent, et cetera. But I, I've not gotten a packet on this. I did, uh, happen to see a packet, uh, in the mayor's office where he showed an individual who what he has done is gone around and look at different armories, um, in, in certain areas and how he's transformed them. Um, you know, that's, not that I got a packet, I just happened to see it, um. But I would just say let it go to Corporation Council, he's already working on it. Request as Council President, request that when Corporation Council, um, you know, gives us an opinion, that it be put back on the council as a priority manner, matter. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Councilor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just in terms of, you know, historic preservation and, uh, the historical society. The CPA funds were used on this, so I mean, there's a, there's a deed restriction on the building to begin with anyway. So the building needs to be maintained per the requirements of the CPA monies that were attached to it, so. Um, you know, I, I know we're going to ask these individuals to be there, but I think it's just keep in mind the fact that it's very limited to what people can do with this building. So they have to maintain, uh, the building in its historic nature because we've, we've provided CPA funds to, to renovate or fix some of the, uh, the parts of those buildings, so. I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that and then that's included in any conversation. Uh, if we are going to have a presentation, I would, I would ask that we make sure that the redevelopment authority or a representative from the redevelopment authority would be in attendance as well because, um, I, you know, I think a lot of us would have some questions with regards to if we are going to be transferring this over to a, um, you know, a quasi municipal board, government board. You know, I, I think part of the thirty B process is to, to provide a competitive process to make sure that we, uh, the best bang for our buck. That we have the ability to choose different proposals. But it's one thing, I mean, I, I don't know, once we transfer the, and if, if this committee decides to, if this council decides to transfer the building over, you know, what is the regulations, uh, and how do we have, what's the safety net to ensure that the redevelopment authority is going to do what they say they're going to do, uh, with the building? Not to suggest that that's, they wouldn't, they would do something other than what they've told us, but I mean, what, what guarantees do we have? Um, and do they really want to take this project on and is it simply just a matter of, you know, circumventing thirty B? Right? I mean, if that, if that's the case, then, you know, I think all we're doing is truly circumventing thirty B and I, I think that in itself is, is could potentially be an issue, at least from my standpoint, um, when we, when we start talking about the process. But I for one, and I think all the other councilors agree that we want to see this property developed, it needs to be developed. Um, I would, I would argue that maybe we want, we might want to keep this property under our control and ownership and put out an RFP to have a management company come in and manage the property based on what we want to see. You know, I, I talked to a couple of councilors, uh, individually, just by chance on, on this type of conversation. And I had mentioned that, you know, when we looked five years ago, there was a trend, um, in the, in, in the States to have incubators, to have buildings that are, are renovated and have places for small businesses to begin and try to kind of get their, their feet wet and get their business developed and, and grown. We've now seen us move away from that, now we're starting to see more of an arts and, and, um, cultural theme that is now coming through a lot of the municipalities. So when we have control of this, we, we are able to kind of pivot and make sure that we've got a building which is really an iconic building in our, in our community, but we would have control to say what is going to be used, whether it's, it is for economic, uh, true economic development for small businesses to kind of incubate what their, um, businesses are, are, are doing. If it's shared space, community space, or if we want to do similar to what we've just seen over in the, uh, Merrill Building with the, the Fabric Festival, which was a great idea. Maybe that's what we want to see and, and then we're driving, we're in the driver's seat and we're making the determination as an administration and as a, as a city council to say, okay, this is really what the goal is. My, my concern is, is once we turn it over and, and completely sell it to somebody, we've got no control over that, that property. Right? And, and that part, that property right there is, is a key property to, uh, the Bank Street Armory, it's, it's a key, it's a key location to, uh, downtown, it's, it's a, it's a gateway to the, to the waterfront. So I think it's important and, and it could be utilized on a number of different levels that could help to, you know, bridge the waterfront and the downtown community, you know? So I, I think it's just, we shouldn't be short sighted on this, I know we want to get this developed. I don't think that we should be rushing it. I also think we should have all the stakeholders, as Council Pereira had suggested and, and a couple of other councilors, to make sure that, you know, Preservation is there, the Historical Commission. But we also need to make sure that we have the right, you know, committees and boards that are going to be involved in this, you know, and especially if it's going to be redevelopment authority. So that, with that, you know, I, I, I yield on that, but I, I look forward to a presentation, but I, I, I would, I would just ask that we do have the redevelopment authority there if, if the, the request from the administration is to have that transferred over to them. I yield.
Councilor Deion?
Yes, um, I agree with my colleague in seat one, um, and, and I wasn't going to get into this part of the discussion. But to date, the, uh, CPA has invested over three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, um, in the armory, uh, replay, you know, repairing chimneys, replacing the center roof. At the present time, there's an application for an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a full replacement on the high roof. Um, you know, and these things need to be taken into consideration because if ultimately it's, the building's going to be sold, then that application should be withdrawn. If that building is going to be turned over to somebody for free, which I don't think it should, um, that application should be withdrawn. If we're going to maintain, um, possession of that building and look more towards a long-term lease, then that's a different situation. So I think we have a lot of points to clarify and a lot of things to look at. And this is an FY twenty-two application for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we, we should always bear in mind that all of these monies are taxpayer monies that have funded this endeavor. And I think, you know, many times the city has come up short. We're always, uh, a day late and a dollar short, we're always giving up something that, that we find out after the fact could have been advantageous for us. And I don't, don't want us to make that mistake with this building. So, um, with that said, I think we need to determine jurisdiction first and I, because I believe that even if the park board does have first say, it ultimately will have to come back to us, uh, to make more of these determinations. So with that, I'll yield.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council, Councilor Pereira? Just unmute yourself, please, Councilor.
Hear you.
Just, uh, a quick question. Didn't we give CPA money, wasn't CPA money given to the Abbey?
A couple of years ago, yes.
Okay, so if Mr. Lombardi decided to sell that, he couldn't because we gave, the CPA gave money?
Um, not sure what the deed restriction would say.
Well, but I'm saying the same thing with the armory, even though CPA has given money to preserve the building, if it's sold, it would be the same thing as with the, uh, armory. Just a thought out there. With that, I yield, thank you.
The motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made, seconded by Councilor Deion, involved in both stakeholders, has been made, a seconded, roll call.
On referral to Corporation Council, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Have the mayor's request for approval of conservation restrictions with Buzzards Bay Coalition, um, one at Yellow Hill and one at Indian Town Road.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Accept the mayor's communication and adopt the orders A and B has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by,
Second.
Or Peckham? Discussion. Roll call.
On adoption of the orders, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yeah.
Item number six is the request for a proposed ordinance establishing a fee schedule for utility pools.
Motion to refer to,
for an ordinance, made by,
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Deion, discussion, roll call.
On referral to the ordinance committee, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
We have the FY twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one quarter one budget report.
Motion to refer to finance would be appropriate?
Motion to refer to finance.
Second. Finance, finance has been made by Councilor Deion, seconded by Councilor Peckham, discussion, roll call.
On referral to the finance committee, Councilors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item eight is our recommendations made by the traffic Item eight is our recommendations made by the Traffic Commission.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, roll call.
On referral to the ordinance committee, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yeah.
The Committee on Public Safety, at a meeting held on October thirteenth, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This resolution related to safety concerns on Wilson Road. I'm giving the item leave to withdraw, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti? Whereas part of the sixteen thousand acre southeastern Massachusetts Bio Reserve is located in Fall River. And whereas the Bio Reserve is managed in a manner to preserve the functionality of its large scale ecosystem and promote biodiversity, conservation, water protection, scientific, educational and recreational opportunities. And whereas the city of Fall River has a total of twenty-two miles of hiking trails that are available for public use. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism convene with the city's forester to discuss the amenities available at the southeastern Massachusetts Bio Reserve Trails.
Motion to adopt is made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira, discussing the sponsor of the resolution, Councilor Pereira.
Yeah, I I would just think that uh all the work that Mr. Labassi's done up there and all the trails, hiking, biking trails. I think having him come into economic development with a presentation, a PowerPoint um to explain to the public what is up there because it's underutilized. And with COVID, you know, families are looking for things to do that are that are outdoors, et cetera. I think we have a gem that uh not many people know about. So I just think to bring awareness to it and let people know what is available, with that I yield.
Thank you, any further discussion, hearing that, motion to adopt has been made in fact, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yeah.
Whereas the Brayton PowerPoint plant, uh excuse me, whereas the Brayton Point Power Plant in Somerset, Massachusetts is located along the Mount Hope Bay. And whereas there have been extensive redevelopment projects taking place at Brayton Point Power Plant that has raised many concerns with possible contamination in the Mount Hope Bay from the work being conducted. And whereas the city of Fall River shares the waterways with our neighbors in the town of Somerset. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs convene with the Administrator of Community Utilities, the Director of Health and Human Services, Director of Community Maintenance Maintenance and a representative from the Town of Somerset Board of Selectmen to discuss this matter.
Thank you, um the reason I filed this resolution is there's been a lot of talk um in Somerset regarding uh that project. And a lot of talk about contamination and uh their concerns. Um I filed this because I wanna see if that is true, if it is factual, how it will affect the city of Fall River down the road, since we're right across the Mount Hope Bay from them. Um, Mr. President, if possible, I would like to amend this resolution to uh not include the Director of Community Maintenance. But instead, uh the Harbor Master, if possible, uh be added to this resolution.
There's a motion to um, say that again?
Uh, I would like to amend uh the resolution to withdraw the Director of Community Maintenance from the resolution and add the Harbor Master instead. I'm my 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 discussion is based on the um the resolution overall. But um, well, I was able to uh email uh representative from the from Somerset. And um I think this is a a good resolution to get an idea of where we stand in this. It's a very, there's a very active and vocal um push to uh keep an eye on everything and and make sure everything's environmentally safe and uh from the Somerset region. And I think uh it's a good, it's good resolution to try to see if uh how it's gonna affect us here and um some of the measures that we can take uh to to protect our area as well. So um so with that I yield.
And if you have any further discussion?
Did you call me? Oh, okay, um I did have the opportunity to bump into Holly McNumber about a week or so ago. And I know that she was doing something over on the Somerset side. But her feelings were that the selectman had no control because it was DEP uh et cetera. But I had also um talked to one of the other selectmen and who was newly elected. And he had me go on a boat, we went out there to see what was going on. And there were a lot of concerns, but this I think is a DEP, DEP needs to be called into this too. Because they had to get certain licenses and they got them, so maybe you should have meant to have someone from DEP as well. I I think uh Council Peckham's right, it's worth looking into. Um but, you know, I don't know if DEP will come right down, but even if you could call them and see what um what licenses they have there, uh when you do have the meeting, just a suggestion, with that I yield.
Thank you, um.
Can I just say it was selectman lawless, I'm sorry, I had a little bit of a fog brain.
No problem, Council Kilby.
Yeah, just quick into uh in order to support uh Council Peckham, I think it's a great resolution. Um I've had conversations with Attorney Pat McDonald and many other residents that live in there and in terms of being concerned about their property values. I'm not saying it's a battle like the LNG battle that we uh we fought a number of years ago. But I I don't think the neighbors down there anticipated um the uh the 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 gravity of the situation and what's going on down there in terms of what it's doing to to our waterfront. So thank you, I yield.
Anything further? There's a motion on the amendment to remove the Director of Community Utilities and add um the Harbor Master. That has been made and seconded on the amendment, hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to adopt as amended would be appropriate.
Motion to adopt as amended, please.
Motion to adopt was amended, that's made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Oh, okay.
Adoption as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council Leon, see your name, Council Leon.
Um uh from uh to the President, to uh Council Pereira, I just wanna say that um as the Chair, I will still uh making an um making an invitation to this meeting uh when we have it to Mass DEP to make sure that there's a rep there that could further inform us on the situation. I yield.
Thank you, roll call.
On adoption as amended, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number twelve is in order rescheduling meetings of the Finance Committee and regular meetings um to December seventeenth, December first and December, excuse me, November seventeen, December first and December fifteenth.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor, seconded by Councilor Peckham, discussion. Roll call.
On adoption of the order, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
We have the Police Chief's Report.
Motion to adopt the Police Chief's Report.
Motion to adopt.
By Councilor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pereira, discussion, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On referral to Corporation Council, Council, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
We have a drain layer license for equality construction works.
Kilby, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, roll call.
On approval of the drain layer, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, our minutes.
Item sixteen to twenty-six together.
I think it would probably.
No.
It it would uh, we should be.
They're all motion to accept and place on file.
Second. Uh items sixteen through nineteen, items sixteen through nineteen would be appropriate to accept and place on file. And the Committee on the Council Meetings need to be approved, so let's take sixteen to nineteen together first, if we can. Items sixteen to nineteen together has been made by. Councilor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On a motion to take the items together, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept the item and place it on file has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to take items twenty through twenty-four together?
Motion to take twenty twenty-four together.
Motion to take items twenty to twenty-four together has been made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On taking the items together, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Accept and place on file.
Motion to approve, motion to approve would be appropriate, as made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On approval of minutes of the City Council Meetings, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
We have the Assistant Corporation Council's response to an open meeting law complaint.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on files has been made by Councilor Dion, seconded by Councilor Peckham, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On acceptance and placement on file, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number twenty-six is a communication from Colin Dias regarding the creation of an elderly and disabled ladder support program.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Um Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
And lastly, we have a a notice of casualty for six sixty-two Widomo Street.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Peckham, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti? Motion to adjourn.